I call the December 1st, 2020 Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Anthony Graves will now lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we just want to thank you for all your many blessings. We want you to watch over us tonight as we swear in new members to this school board. We're excited to have them join us in this important work that we endeavor to do for the students, the faculty, the staff, and everyone here inside of Stanley County to provide the children of Stanley County with the very best education possible. And Lord, we just ask you to watch over everyone, all the faculty, staff, the members of the board, and all the families here inside of Stanley County as we get through this COVID pandemic where we know that you're watching over us and we're in your hands. And we take faith in that and hope in that. Lord, we just ask you to bless us tonight and watch over us as we make decisions that affect the children and the employees of Stanley County schools. In your name we pray, amen.
Do you want me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands the one nation, the one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Now we will have the board member oath of office, and we will start with Ms. Glenda Gibson.
Hey, how are you? Congratulations.
Thank you.
You want to raise your right hand? And just when I say aye, you state your name. Aye?
Glenda Gibson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me, God.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me, God.
Aye?
Aye, Glenda Gibson.
Do further solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me, God. Aye?
Glenda Gibson.
Do further swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Stanley County Board of Education according to the best of my skill and ability according to law, so help me, God.
I will.
Okay. Get you to sign. Okay. If you'll just sign there and here. Okay. And this one is for you to keep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.[287.22][287.22](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Solonson?
How are you doing? You just say your name after I say aye. Aye? Oh, I'm sorry, raise your right hand. Aye? Say, where you, Solonson?
Bill Solonson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me, God. Aye?
Bill Solonson.
Do further solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me, God. Aye?
I will, Bill Solonson.
Do further swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Stanley County Board of Education according to the best of my skill and ability according to law, so help me, God.
I will, Bill Solonson.
Okay. Get you to sign. You want to sign your name here. Sign right there and right there. There you go. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.[417.44][417.44](APPLAUSE).
Dr. Lefler?
How are you?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Raise your right hand and just say your name after I say aye. Aye?
Rufus Lefler.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me, God. Aye?
Rufus Lefler.
Do further solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me, God. Aye?
Rufus Lefler.
Do further swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Stanley County Board of Education according to the best of my skill and ability according to law, so help me, God. I'll get you to sign. Come around, right there and right there.
Okay.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Lawson?
Baby, how are you? Can you just say? Sorry. Can you just say aye after I say? You say your name after I say aye. Aye?
Vicki Watson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me, God. Aye?
Vicki Watson.
Do further solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina, to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me, God. Aye?
Vicki Watson.
Do further swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Stanley County Board of Education according to the best of my skill and ability according to law, so help me, God.
I will.
If you'll just sign here and here.
Give me this side.
Thank you. Don't give it in half there. Hard to see it, Mr. Rauter. There you go.
And last but not least, Ms. Poplin.
How are you doing? How are you? I need you to say your name after I say aye. Aye?
Carla Poplin.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me, God. Aye?
Carla Poplin.
Do further solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of the state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me, God. Aye?
Carla Poplin.
Do further swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of the Stanley County Board of Education according to the best of my skill and ability according to law, so help me, God.
I will.
All right, if you'll just sign here and here. Are you going to have the pen? Okay, thank you. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll get together for pictures with the full board with the new and reelected and other board members after the conclusion of the meeting, but I just want to give one more round of applause to all the board members. Congratulations. At this time, we have the election of the chairperson. Nominations are now open for a chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education. Do I have any nominations?
Dr. Dennis, I would like to nominate Mr. Jeff Chance for chairperson of the school board.
Thank you. I have one nomination for Mr. Jeff Chance. Do I have any other nominations for chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education?
Dr. Dennis, I move that we close nominations for chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close nominations? Do I have a second? I'm sorry, your second, Ms. Watson. All right, nominations are now closed. All in favor of Mr. Jeff Chance for chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Do I have any opposed? None opposed. Congratulations, Mr. Chance, Chairman of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education. At this time, I have nominations now open for the vice chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education. Do I have any nominations?
Dr. Dennis, I'd like to nominate Ms. Glenda Gibson for vice chair.
One nomination for Ms. Glenda Gibson. Do I have any other nominations for vice chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education? If not, do I have a motion to close nominations?
I make a motion and close the nominations.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Graves. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Chance. All in favor of Ms. Glenda Gibson for vice chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
And do I have any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Gibson, on becoming the vice chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education. And now we'll turn the meeting over to Chairman Chance.
I'd like to thank the board members for your trust and support this evening. I'll do the very best I can to keep us on the right track here, and I'm certainly not above the stakes, and I would encourage anyone who catches me in one to please bring it to my attention as soon as possible. At this time, I'm going to ask for approval of the minutes of the November 3rd, 2020 regular meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, they'll stand approved as presented. At this time, I'm going to call on our committee chairs for reports. Instructional program, Dr. Dennis?
I have no report. We do not meet.
Facilities, Mr. Graves?
I have no report.
And finance has no report. Personnel, Ms. Watson? Policy, Dr. Dennis?
I have no report for policy or LRM.
Okay. Ms. Gibson, do you have anything for LRM? Next item on the agenda is the athletic transportation charges. Ms. Pennington?
Good evening, board members. I'm here tonight to let you know that we need your approval on a proposed change to the fee that we charge for the use of activity buses and county cars. You have a copy of this proposal in your packet tonight. You may remember a couple of years ago when the superintendent asked for a per-mile rate for activity buses and county cars be changed from a dollar per mile to $2.22 per mile. Ever since then, our schools have struggled with this increase, especially when it comes to athletics. With the challenges of COVID on athletic budgets this year, we see a dire need to rethink this rate. To give you an example, South Stanley High School travels to Chatham Central High School as part of their conference. So every sport season, they're traveling to Chatham Central in Bear Creek. They are charged $280 for the use of just one activity bus. Keep in mind that some sports may require more than one bus to get all athletes to our away events. Most schools depend on sports with larger crowds, such as football and basketball, to bring in enough revenue to support the other sports that either don't charge an admission, such as cross-country, or have smaller attendance rates. However, in this, that is in a non-COVID year. This year, our high school athletic programs have strict attendance regulations set by the High School Athletic Association that it's going to drastically impact their gate revenues. We anticipate that our schools are going to have a difficult time covering all of their athletic expenses this year. A reduction in the mileage rate for activity buses will help a great deal. You'll see on the handout in your packet the per-mile reimbursement rate for activity buses. In consultation with Mr. Dudney, we believe the highlighted charges can be excluded. Those are the wages for drivers and tort insurance, which both apply to yellow buses only, not to activity buses. With these exclusions, that reduces that amount to $1.46 per mile. I am asking you tonight to please approve this change and make it retroactive for any activity bus or county car use that has previously occurred this school year for athletics.
Thank you, Ms. Penning. When we went through these numbers, we just saw that if you look at charging wage of a driver, the coach is driving the bus, so we're charging them for a driver that they're providing free to themselves. And activity buses, unlike yellow buses, do not, we don't pay tort liability. We're really charging schools for two things they don't need. So I definitely think it's fair, and you bring up some great points also with the funding of athletics moving forward, and we had those conversations at another meeting, but I just don't think it's fair for the charged schools for what they use and not what we would charge a yellow bus because, again, they provide their driver and we don't have to pay tort insurance. Motion is to approve as presented.
Do I have a second? Seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. If the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is curriculum and instruction, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis.
Good evening, board members. I have a few items for you this evening. First up is an additional candidate for early graduation. The name of that student is in your packet, and I do need board approval on this.
I move we approve this student for early graduation.
I have a motion by Ms. Gibson to approve this student's request for early graduation. Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay.
Okay, the next item that I have for you is a point of information, just sharing the results of our second semester registration form that went out in the month of November. What you have in your packet are the number of students who are requesting a return to face-to-face instruction. So you can see those broken down by elementary on that first page in the upper-left corner. On the second page, bottom-left corner, you will see the number of middle school students requesting to return. And on the third page in the upper-left corner, that is the number of high school students requesting to return face-to-face. My curriculum and instruction team is currently working with personnel to make the necessary adjustments in teaching staff to meet the needs of those students who will be returning face-to-face from full remote instruction.
Chairman Chance, I have a couple of questions. First question is capacity. So we do have, under the current mandate from the state, we have enough capacity to accommodate all of them, some of them. What's the breakdown?
To, just to remind the board, at the elementary level, we are allowed to operate under Plan A, which means there are no capacity restrictions. We are not limited with that six-foot social distancing at the elementary level. So foreseeable at the elementary level, not an issue. At the middle school level, just looking at the breakdown by grade level, there may be some places where we have to make some adjustments and maybe look for an additional classroom space, but right at the moment, we are not seeing that. With our high schools, the number of students choosing to continue full remote, I don't think that that will be an issue at the high school level either.
So have we received any indication from the state, a commitment, a guarantee from the governor, that they are not going to reimpose any restrictions on an elementary school?
We have not.
No.
Okay. So is there a, is there, my concern is that by bringing these students in and making these changes, if there is any adjustment, if there's any adjustment, I am not going, I am going to vote to not abide by the new requirement from the state because I'm not going to be put in a position where we are going to have these families make a decision about bringing their kids back in, only to be told, oops, they're going to have to go back home? I don't know, I can't speak for any other board member, but I don't think any other board member is going to want to be put in that position either. So as, as long as, I just want to go on record, if there isn't a motion or if there's no action needs to be taken by this board, that if you guys decide to do this, that you're basically saying we are going to not abide by a governor's mandate that we reduce class size in the event of a continued increase of COVID cases in the state.
I hear your concern. We are operating under what is currently the governor's executive order for Plan A for K through five and Plan B or C for secondary, and so we have chosen Plan B for our secondary. The situation changes, you know, at any time per the governor's executive order based on positivity rates in COVID. But what we know at this moment is we, in our initial presentation to the board back in August, presented to you the option of the AB, and at that time, it was ABC rotation at the high school. So based on the current executive order from the governor, we have the ability to go forward with the continued AB schedule at secondary and Plan A at the elementary level. I do hear your concern, but we would not be in a position to go against the governor's executive order. We would probably need to revisit the plans at that point.
Okay. So what is the plan if the governor comes back? Because you can't come back to me next month and say, oops, we've let these students in, 340 students, we've got 63 students, you know, these are families. So if the governor, because all the states, I mean, this is apparently is the next, I mean, this is getting worse, according to everybody, except for the CDC acknowledging that children are at a lesser risk, but it's not just the children, it's the staff. We understand that because the children can carry it, so they could potentially expose staff to it, and that is a major concern. Because if, if, if the staff are infected, let's say that, that they're not, you know, hopefully they wouldn't have any serious effects from it, but it takes them out of the classroom. That means that someone else has to fill their spot. It also means that there are potentially a large number of people that are going to have to be quarantined as a result of that exposure. So what is the plan for these families if we bring these kids back and then we have to go back and reduce the size? What are, what, because we can't, we can't make that decision in, in a 30-minute discussion in a board meeting. What planning has taken place to, are you going to route the kids back home? Is it going to be the, you know, last in, first out?
I think I can answer that question. I brought, I brought Ms. Blake Lewis here forward for this information item because the plan approved is where we are now and for kids to have the option to come back. So with the great, you know, you make a good point. If there were to be some movement by the governor, of course, if he has an executive order, we would have to follow said executive order up to what he said. And if those are, if we were looking at things as far as options we have, then we would definitely have to have those conversations at that time and make decisions predicated upon what we'd be able to do. But I totally hear, I'm worried as well about the spike and everything, but as of now, the original plan approved allowed for students to come back at the semester. So we're providing the numbers for the board, showing you kind of what that's going to look like right now.
Well, that was also without any ability to foresee the future, and there was every indication that the numbers were getting better at that time. So, you know, we can't be held to the, we can't be held to a different standard than the school system or the state. We have to be flexible to be able to say, wait a second, maybe they don't come back based on this. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that someone has to acknowledge that kids could be coming back and then they could be turned right back around within a week's notice.
You're right. It could happen, yeah. It could happen, you're right.
Putting that out there.
Definitely.
May I add something, Mr. Graves, with, with that? I feel like, number one, we're, we're not the only county in this. we're, we're not the only county in this, in this predicament that we're in. So, um, it sounds like to me that right now, we've got space, we've got staff, and it's, it's kinda like anything could happen even right now with staffing in a school and, you know, and we would have to, you know, follow what the county office might, you know, ask us to do at that point. I just kind of see this as, you know, we, we take it. You mentioned the word flexible. We're just gonna have to be as flexible as we possibly can, realizing we're not the only system in this situation. And so we're doing everything that we can to bring our children back, those families that want their children back in for face-to-face, and we'll try our best to make it happen.
We will do everything we can to accommodate them, yes.
I agree. I understand exactly what you are saying. I just...
I think two things. Number one, I think Stanley County may be one of the only counties that has this type of discussion because I've watched other meetings and people aren't bringing this up. And number two, I just also don't want there to be a shock or surprise because that usually happens. It's like, if we have to make a, a, a change, then it's like people have to understand that this wasn't done arbitrarily. It was done with consideration and forethought that, hey, we're trying to be flexible like we did at the start. The school system offered a very flexible, uh, opportunity for parents in Stanley County, but there is a cost with that flexibility. You also have to be flexible to go the other direction if needs arise. So thank you.
Okay.
And I just wanna make one more note, just for information from the board. We've also let the parents know that due to these shifts and the way we'll have to rearrange teachers, that there's a possibility you will not, may not have the same teacher, so that won't be a surprise to them as well. I would hate for it to come back and, you know, them be disappointed in that. So we've made that, uh, communication.
Yes. The final item that I have for you is just the updated, um, AB rotation calendar for middle-school and high-school. We had initially only, um, set the calendar for that rotation through December, uh, but now that it's becoming apparent that we will need to continue with that, we just extended the color-coded calendar out through the end of the year. We've not adjusted anything on the calendar. This is simply for your information and for parents, for their ease of being able to see when A days and B days are for the second semester. So we have that calendar for you for middle-school and for high-school, just as a point of information. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Personnel and Student Services. Ms. Calvert?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chance, said members of the board, the first item is in regard to our Beginning Teacher Support Program, my plan. And this has been approved by the board prior, in prior years. However, there's been a change in law, and we had to make an addition to our Beginning Teacher Support Plan, and that can be found, that addition can be found on page three. It's been highlighted in yellow. Per new state law, um, at the end of the, the year, we're supposed to give first-year teachers a survey, and it's asking them, how well-prepared were you in college to teach? And, um, the state DPI will create that survey. All we have to do is to give the survey to our beginning teachers. So I need your approval, please, for the, the new addition.
I move we approve the new addition for the Beginning Teacher Support Program.
Motion by, um, Ms. Gibson to approve the recommendation for Beginning Teacher Program. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Watson. Is there any discussion? Any and all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. If the motion carries.
Thank you.
Then the next item is the Personnel Agenda. Additions that have been made have been made in red. Uh, Section 1 requires no action, but Section 2 does require action.
Ms. Calvert, could we possibly pull Section 2, please, for closed session?
Absolutely.
Just a quick question.
No problem. Thank you.
We will approve that again in open session as we come back out. Auxiliary Services, Mr. Dudney?
Good evening. I'd like to turn this over to Todd Bowers to discuss the Oakboro school.
Good evening, Board members. I'm here tonight just to give you an update and some information on a capital project that we're pursuing at Oakboro Elementary School. It's the replacement of the chiller. Um, we had a pre-bid meeting today, had five contractors attend the pre-bid meeting. Uh, so we, we feel like we're, you know, we're gonna get some good bids. We, I expect this project to come in somewhere between 225 and 250, 225,000, 250,000. This was a project that was on the initial capital outlay, uh, plan that was presented back in May or June of last year. It's a very time-sensitive project because, like I said, we're trying to get the chiller replaced before we get back into heating season, and so we, we are on a very, very tight schedule. I will report back next meeting, uh, let you know, uh, who the low bidder was that we contracted with and what the actual price was for the project.
And I will say, I asked Mr. Bowers to bring that back. By your policy, if we contract for anything over $50,000, you need to be aware. He is gonna use proper bidding, but like he said, is a very time-sensitive. It's much better we get this project done over the break, uh, since it's gonna be a major project. And I appreciate you bringing it and doing diligence and, uh, taking care of the bidding process.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Right, uh, public comments, and I don't see that we have any hope for you. My superintendent comments, Dr. Dennis?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, so I was delighted Monday when, uh, Ms. Calvert came to me and she said, uh, we need to go, uh, we need to go downtown real quick. And I said, what for? She said, um, and I'd been, uh, made aware of this earlier. I just, it kinda snuck up on me that, uh, we got to go and, uh, they did the groundbreaking for the charters of freedoms, correct. And if you're not aware, it's a project where they're gonna take and do an installation and, uh, right out in that plaza, and it's gonna have, I think it's gonna have the Constitution, Declaration of Independence, and a missing one.
And the card?
Yeah, it's, one is the other. And, um, but the great thing about it is, the students of West Stanley High School are, the masonry class are gonna be the ones who actually do all the masonry for the project. And after they do the masonry for the project, the, um, the charters of freedom, the association, uh, is going to make a plaque with their name in it, and their names will be, you know, pretty much engraved in this project that'll be there for years and years to come. And I just think that that's a really great opportunity for our masonry class. Um, it's, based on the schematics I've saw, it's gonna be a beautiful installation and, you know, something that's only, you know, educational. There will be components to where, um, they will provide at no cost educational, uh, ancillary materials to the schools and use it as kind of a springboard for educational conversations around the founding of the United States of America. And so I'm just really impressed, and I think that's a really good project and something great for our kids to be involved in. Uh, this month, we have testing coming up at the end of the month. It'll conclude on the 22nd. Uh, 22nd is our early release day also, and the holiday begins on the 23rd. We also, uh, we, um, we were approved with a grant for the Teacher Education Corps, and what this is, is I guess it's kinda like the Peace Corps for Education is the best way I understand it. I know several districts are, uh, are in, are in this in the, in North Carolina, and actually several districts that I'm aware of are doing the same thing we're doing, is we're gonna take our person that we get and use them for contact tracing. And I think that'll take a lot of the weight off of our nurses who, right now, you know, they're just, they're under a lot of stress and a lot of, you know, they're doing a lot of contact tracing, and it can be a very tedious and meticulous process. And I think they've done a great job, but the hours they're putting in doing this, it's really gonna help to have a person come in, and their dedicated role is just to contact people and try to figure out, you know, have you been in contact with this person? And so that's what we're gonna use our individual from, that we receive from the Teacher Education Corps. Um, December 3rd to 4th, I will be attending the Winter Superintendent's Conference. It is at the Grandover in Greensboro. It has been truncated, uh, by one day. It's usually the second, third, and fourth. Uh, so right now, it's, um, it's all day, the 3rd. Most of the day, well, half-day on the 4th, will be done at lunchtime, and it's gonna be socially distanced, and there's no, been a networking, but it's where we get a lot of our information, and, uh, we'll meet the new state superintendent and, you know, do some other professional development there. And the last thing is, just to make the board aware, by my contract, I am signed up for the next-gen superintendent's, uh, program. Um, and it has begun already, so they actually gave us a prorated, uh, prorated price, and I'll, uh, attend the rest of the sessions for the rest of the year. And it also affords me an executive coach who's a distinguished retired superintendent from one of the, I'd actually say it's Dr. Lori Morrow, uh, and she just recently retired. And so, um, I guess that's pretty much it. And again, I have to do that per my contract with the board. That is part of my professional development. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dennis. Board member comments? I'm gonna start with Ms. Gibson down here on the end, please.
Well, I wanted to thank, um, Ms. Suzanne Louder, who did our swearing-in, and I'll, um, I appreciate her being here. Um, thank you always to those of you who are here from the county office and for all that, for all that you are doing, and especially during this time of COVID and ever-changing situations. I appreciate it, and I appreciate always seeing your, your faces out there, even with your mask on. And I can tell who you are, but thank you for being here. Congratulations, Mr. Chance, um, elected our new school board chair.
You as well.
And I look forward to serving with you. I look forward to serving with this new board and everyone that's here, um, even those I've served with, and then the new, new members as well. Um, I look forward to serving with you, and thank you. Thank you for wanting to, you know, be of service to our, our school system and our families and children. There was a student, well, she's no longer a student, but I had her at West Stanley High School, and she passed away, Ms. Tracy Lambert-Balkum. And, um, I don't know if many of you know her, but what a delightful person she always was, and her children, um, are coming through or have come through our school system. But my heart goes out to her and her family, and I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention and to remember that family in our prayers. Um, Dr. Blake Lewis, Ms. Calvert, Dr. Dennis, and all of you out here working at the county off, in the county office, thank you for all that you're doing. Um, and, and again, you know, with what you're having to plan, with our students coming back, those who want to come back second semester, and I know you're putting a lot of time into that, and, um, I, I appreciate that. And, Dr. Dennis, thank you for being here and , uh, accepting the position to be our new superintendent. And the last thing, I attended the virtual North Carolina School Board Association Conference. I wasn't sure how a virtual conference was going to go down, but, um, I'll be glad to share some things with you sometimes when we have, you know, meetings or whatever. I, it was very informative. I, I attended a lot of sessions that were really good, and, um, it was nice to be able to attend those while sitting at home drinking coffee in, in your relaxing clothes. So, but, um, thank you for allowing me to, to attend that virtual conference. That's all I have.
Ms. Wilson?
I'll start out by echoing, uh, Ms. Gibson's comments to all of our staff, the central office, our teachers, assistants, support staffs of the schools. These are amazing times, amazingly challenging times, and I personally am grateful for every single one of them. I look up around here, and I'm not sure that I belong up here. I see two doctors on the board, Dr. Chance, Dr. Lefler. I see a hugely successful businessman down there, Mr. Graves, two educational experts, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Watson.
And I feel undercooked for this holiday meal is what I'm saying here. But even my fellow
rookie board member, Ms. Poplin, she intimidates me a little bit as her passion for the kids is legend in Stanley County. All that being said, I am honored to be a member of such a capable group. With the crisis affecting our educational institutions so critically, I for one am glad to have this crowd to work with up here on the stage. And I know that under the artful leadership of Dr. Dennis, that Stanley County schools will come out of the COVID crisis stronger and more effective than ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Dr. Lefler?
Looking at this board, I'm looking back on the board that was before us, and I'm just glad that they took a stand. Like Mr. Graves said, there's very few in the state that have stepped up and taken a chance. And I think our kids, students, everybody is benefiting from that. I know our staff's having to work awful hard, and everybody's doing a good job, but all the students are falling behind with all this pandemic and everything going on. But I think with you taking a stand and getting the students in person, especially the young ones, that in the long run, they're gonna thank you for doing it. And I know that as long as we as a board and as a staff and group explain to the parents what we're doing, they're gonna accept it. Some of them aren't, but people are not gonna agree with you 100%. But I'm just very glad to be part of a board that was forward-thinking enough to look for our students, and they've taken a lot of hits for doing this. But I'm just looking forward to working with this board and making it as easy as possible on our staff and our students so that they can do the best they can during this very trying time in our country's history.
Ms. Watson?
I also will echo everything that has been said. Um, I'm very thankful for this county office. They work really, really hard. Um, they're always where they're supposed to be, doing what they're supposed to be doing, and I do appreciate that very much. Our teachers, uh, I'm very appreciative for you. You are working harder, I think, than if you were in school, real, real, our real school, you know, like we were supposed, we're supposed to be. Um, I'm like, Dr. Um, Lefler, um, I think our kids are safer at school. Um, there's not as much going on, not as much things happening, and I, I just think they're better off at school, but sometimes that doesn't always happen. Um, I want to welcome our new board members. Um, it's gonna be a pleasure for us, so, uh, I know things will, we won't always agree, but that's okay. Um, and I welcome Dr. Dennis. I didn't do that last time, but I'm really proud that you're here. Um, I think he's gonna be really good for us. Um, and as a last note, Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Ms. Poplin?
Um, I also echo everything that everyone's been saying. Um, I do wanna make sure that I take the time to, um, thank the county office and the staff and the teachers, um, being in the schools up until this past week. Myself, the teachers are putting in a lot, a lot of hard work. Um, that's your support staff. Everyone is doing added jobs, and we appreciate that, and we thank you for that. Um, I also look forward to working with, um, this board, and, um, I'm excited. And I too want to, um, wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, and congratulations, Chairman Chance. You, you and Vicki are giving everybody a run for their money for, for time served. So, uh, I don't know, Vicki's probably closest to Melvin, but...
Got me by a couple, yeah.
Yeah, just by a couple. Uh, I, I wanted to start out and, um, say, the last two years, my first two years on the board, I, I couldn't have been, uh, more proud of, of the way that the board worked together. I would say that, um, we had very few disagreements, and even when there were disagreements, they were very constructive, and, um, those, those disagreements actually, um, led to a better outcome, um, in every single case. Uh, so I think even if maybe somebody was on the, on the, we'll say, the, the losing side, um, they weren't too disappointed, right? Not as, not as much as they could have been. So, uh, you know, it, it was Chairman Poole and, and... So, you know, it, it was Chairman Poole and, and Mr. McIntyre and Mrs. Crump, you know, they, they, they were dedicated. And what's exciting to me is the new board members that are coming in are fighters, and I would say that that's what we need, especially for the, the upcoming two years. We need fighters, because Stanley County has, I believe, led all the other counties in the state as far as standing up for what's right, questioning all of the decisions that we had to make, taking those decisions very seriously, and I think leading the way. And, and I'm not saying that from, as a board member, I'm saying that as the school system, because I think that the, the plans that the school system came up with and the way that the staff handled not only this year, but, but the last semester of the previous school year was an example to not only all the school systems in the state, but also in the country. And, and a lot of the efforts that were undertaken by the school system were actually recognized nationally, and so that's something, it's, it's nice to see all the hard work recognized in many cases, even if it isn't often enough. Hopefully, everyone in the school system knows how much they're appreciated and valued by the school board and even by the, the new members before they even were sworn in tonight. It's very clear that they care very deeply about the school system, and so I wanted to congratulate Glenda Gibson for running unopposed. I joke, I, I ran against Glenda the first time, and she, she whooped me. Not as bad as some people have been whooped in Stanley County, but it was, it was enough. But it was interesting, and I, I want to tell, tell you one thing, I was in a meeting a couple months ago with her, and I, we, we were having some very serious deliberations about important things, and, and I said at the end of the meeting, I said, I'm glad you beat me. Remember that? I told her, I said, I was glad that she beat me, because then we could both be on the board together, and I felt like the board was stronger with both of us on it instead of just one of us, so, and I still feel that way. So congratulations to you on being vice, vice chairperson. Mr. Sorenson, ooh, the state better look out, because now he's an elected official. It's one thing to be a private citizen, but when you have people in the county voting for you, the general assembly and elected officials in Raleigh have to take you a little bit more seriously, although they should take everyone seriously, the, the facts are, when you have 10, 15, 20,000 people supporting you, they have to pay attention. And all I can say is, if people thought that I was interested in the finances, especially at the state level, you have not seen anything yet. So I'm very excited for him to be on the board for, just for that reason alone, because I think everyone here would agree that the general assembly oftentimes acts like they're doing us a favor, when in reality, they're just doing their job and they're not doing a good job of it when it comes to funding education. And in that respect, I think that is a nonpartisan issue that we can all get behind. So I look forward to, to reading your reports about the finances very much. And, and our other board members, congratulations, Dr. Lefler and Ms. Poplin. You know, it's going to be interesting this coming winter semester, but I can tell you, I feel very comfortable and confident that we are going to do the right thing by the entire school system, and especially also with our, our new leadership as well coming in. We have sort of like a new team, a refreshed team, some fresh fighters that will inspire everyone, and so I think that's important, because that's what the faculty and staff and parents of the students of Stanley County deserve. They deserve a board that cares as much about them as they do anything else, so, so I'm excited about that. And I just did want to last mention, before I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, is that I do say this, but it bears repeating, the, the staff of Stanley County schools is just absolutely amazing. As an organization, the level of professionalism is, is as good as it gets in any industry. So I'm proud to work with as many professionals as we have here in the county, so thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Typically, the chair doesn't participate in, in board member comments, but I am going to take a little leeway of the chair this evening. I'd like to ask each of the board members, if you would, to write down for me and get to me as soon as possible, the committees that you are interested in serving on. I have some ideas of my own, but if you would do that, I would appreciate it. As Mr. Graves and I think as Watson alluded to, you get more than two people in a room, or for that matter, two, there are going to be disagreements. And I encourage all board members to be very open, be very honest, and voice concerns, ask questions, and by all means, look for the answers. They're out there, most of the time, unless, of course, you're dealing with state legislature and there are no answers. But nonetheless, you know, we can all agree to disagree and, and move forward, I think, in a number of ways, and I do concur with the comments made by many of you tonight, that I'm very comfortable and, and feel very positive this board is going to continue to move forward with our new members in a, a great way. Most importantly, too, I think, is the fact that we're attempting to do the very best that we can in a trying situation, as I, I hope all school boards are doing across the state, but I've also listened and watched some of those same meetings that other members of our board have, and as Mr. Graves has said, this topic isn't discussed. What are you going to do with students? How are you going to bring them back? What are your plans? It's like, okay, we had a plan, now we're done. Well, it doesn't work that way. This is an evolving, ongoing issue that isn't going away, folks, despite what we think. I do hope the vaccines, that once they're out, are going to be as efficacious as companies would have us believe, and that we can hopefully get back to some semblance of order, but truthfully, I believe that life as we know it is, is forever changed. So with that being said, this board, I think, takes without question, along with our central office staff, an exceptional amount of concern and effort and thought goes into every decision that is made, from whatever level, from whatever department, it doesn't matter. Every decision that's made is, is hashed out with as many scenarios as can be thought of for the answer in the end. Ultimately, I guess the buck stops with us in meeting cases, but, you know, as Dr. Lefler and I have done for many years, practiced medicine, others of you have, have been in education and business, my job is not to tell these folks or the professionals how to do their job. My job is to listen to the ideas and the concerns and, and such that they have, and to support them as best I can based on the information that we're given. So with that said, thanks you all as well for your sincere, hard work and your long, long hours in putting together the plan that we have, that I do believe was very much a, a forerunner in the state for other districts, and again, another issue, Dr. James is recognized on national TV for our district being one of the very first districts to feed our students, something that people just don't think about sometimes. Kids have still got to eat, so any decision that we make, I want you to know that we try to take every conceivable scenario in, into account. I'd also like to wish everyone a very safe and Merry Christmas, such as this, and pray that everyone enjoys it the very best that you can. And with that said, the date and location of our next board meeting will be Tuesday, January the 5th, here in the Jean McIntyre Meeting Room at 7:00 PM. I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session for personnel matters, student matters, and attorney-client matters under the appropriate North Carolina general statutes.
Move we go into closed session?
Motion by Ms. Gibson to go into closed session. That's second. Second by Dr. Lefler, any discussion? Any and all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Five-minute recess heading into closed session, folks. Call us back into open session, and I'll entertain a motion to approve section two of the personnel.
I move we approve section two of the personnel agenda.
Excuse me, have a second, Ms. Watson? Any discussion? Any and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
At this time, the law of the way is most anticipated motion of the evening.
I move we adjourn.
No discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.